Okay, we're getting, it is that time of switching hour here. Good evening and welcome to the city commission regular meeting for Tuesday, December 8th. I'd like to welcome everybody here and also to remind you to turn off or silence your cell phones. And this is also a televised meeting and that'll repeat later on Channel 2. And we're going to go ahead and begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. And tonight, we have Nathan Toy with Troop 366, who is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Nathan, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
We're going to begin with old business and we're going to do the consideration of the previous meeting minutes for November 24th, 2015, regular meeting. Do I have any corrections or any discussion on that? If not, are we ready for a motion?
And Mayor, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from November 24th.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the November 24th regular meeting minutes. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. And we have Commissioner Prisinger, if you're looking at the television and you don't see anyone sitting there, he's joined us by telephone there. For second consideration ordinances, item two, we have Ordinance 7986 to amend the code of ordinances and Appendix F. Scott, is there anything else that staff needs to add on this?
No, there's no changes since this was discussed at the study session, so it's before you for the second consideration ordinance.
Could I have a roll call vote of approval for Ordinance 7986? Begin in with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero, too. Item three is Ordinance 7987 to amend Article II, the governing body. Scott, anything on that?
No changes since the first consideration ordinance and the study session.
Could I have a roll call vote for approval for Ordinance 7987, governing body? Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That also passes five to zero. Excuse me. Second consideration for Ordinance 7988, excuse me, condemnation?
No changes, Mayor, since the first consideration ordinance for the study session.
Thank you for that rescue. Could I have a roll call for approval? Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Under citizens' participation, what we usually do is open this up for anyone that would like to petition the governing body on any item that is not on the agenda. I do know that we have some citizens that will ask them to participate in items that are on the agenda tonight, but I have an item to share to start us off with that. And I'd like to do a recognition for our deputy clerk, Carla Williamson. And Carla, Deputy City Clerk Carla Williamson has been awarded the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. To receive this designation, Carla completed 120-hour education program sponsored by the City Clerks and Municipal Finance Officers Association of Kansas and Wichita State University. The program included training in the areas of administrative law, public administration, organization and management, fiscal policy and budgeting, government planning, interpersonal communications, personal administration, public relations, contemporary problems in government, cash management and investments, and records management. As we congratulate Carla on this achievement, we also want to recognize you who provided financial support and encouragement for her to attend the Certification Institute. We recommend you for recognizing the value of municipal clerk's certified program and assure you will also support the continuing education required to keep up with the changing regulations and requirements needed for this important job. This is a great achievement for Carla and demonstrates her continuing commitment to the profession and to the city of Leavenworth. And this is from Martha Sumral, the Chair of the Education Certification Committee, Chair of this, and want to congratulate Carla. If you wonder what our city clerks do and what they have to go through to get to where they are, it's, it is a very important position in our city and we just want to thank you so much for this honor and also agreeing to fill in the footsteps of Karen here, but congratulations to you. Give a little. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, C, none. We'll go ahead and move on to general items. Now, we're going to start with the public hearing amending the 2015 budget. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. We are now in a public hearing. Scott, do you want to begin?
Yes, I'm going to have Dan Williamson, our former finance director and assisting us during our time where we don't have one onboard. So, Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And for the commissioners who haven't gone through this before, I'll explain a little bit of the mechanics. Each year in the summer, we approve the next year's budget. So back in 2014, we went through the process to approve the 2015 budget. That process includes the publication of the budget in the local newspaper, a public hearing, and then presumably after the public hearing approval of the budget. Now, the significance of the publication is that it sets a statutory limit for expenditures for each fund that you cannot exceed under any circumstance, no matter how much money you get. So even if you got a whole lot more money than you expected, it's still limited to what was published for expenditures, unless you go through a republishing process, which is what we're doing now. We have already put this in the newspaper about two weeks ago. We are now in the process of holding the public hearing and presumably and hopefully you will approve the republishing after the public hearing. So those are the mechanics. And there are two important points I want to mention. Number one, you can never republish a budget for the purpose of raising property taxes. In order to support the additional expenditures, you have to have other sources of support for it. And then number two, I should say to you that none of these amendments that we're discussing tonight were a surprise to us when we were preparing the budget five, six months ago. We were well aware of each one of these, and so republishing these budgets won't have any impact on 2016. So the substance, in both the Library Fund and Library Employee Benefits Fund, we're going to receive more property taxes and/or motor vehicle taxes that were budgeted than was budgeted. We want to be able to transfer that money over to the library so that they can use it, but in order to do that, we need to raise the statutory expenditure limit in order to make that transfer. In the Library Fund, we need to increase the budget by $12,500 and the Library Employee Benefits Fund by $5,400. And again, we're supporting that through the increased property and motor vehicle taxes. The Recreation Fund needs 2015 expenditure authority increased by $77,900 to accommodate a higher expected level of personnel costs due to employee turnover. This is primarily due to the employee payouts that sometimes occur when individuals retire or leave. And this past year, we had one in particular that was significant and several others. And we're going to support that increased expenditure with a transfer from the CIP Sales Tax Fund that allows, that fund allows us to support the community center operations with that source of money. The Bond and Interest Fund, there are really three different items. Number one, you approved the budget for 2015, but later in the year, you decided to do a bond issue for, for the new software system. Okay, so that was not budgeted. But when you decided to do that, you were able to figure out that if we were going to save a lot of money in the General Fund because of the, the maintenance support was going to be a lot less, and so you had decided to transfer that amount of money over to the Bond and Interest Fund to take care of that payment. And that was fifty, almost $55,000. Secondly, the, about $40,000 of interest expenses were budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund, and what we'd like to do is budget it and spend it actually in the Bond and Interest Fund to keep all principal and interest payments for bonds coming out of the same place. So we're going to transfer $40,000 from Capital Projects over to Bond and Interest and go ahead and make the payment out of Bond and Interest. So that's essentially a wash. And then finally, there was about $13,000 worth of bond issuance costs associated with the software issue that we have to accommodate that was, again, not expected, and we can handle that just through miscellaneous revenue in the fund. So altogether, we need to increase that fund by $107,835. But again, we have the sources to be able to handle that. The CIP Sales Tax Fund and the Tax Increment Fund, neither one of those existed last year. There was nothing published whatsoever, but there was a decision by Mr. Hale to go ahead and create a CIP Sales Tax Fund so that when we got that money, it would go straight into this fund instead of what I had been doing, which was accepting it or receiving it in the General Fund. And, and his rationale, which was a correct one, in my judgment, was that the countywide sales tax fund has its own fund, and so he wanted to create a CIP Sales Tax Fund to more or less mirror the way we were doing countywide sales tax. And so it's certainly an appropriate thing to do, but there's no budget for it. And we will receive approximately $2,075,000 this year in that fund, and that money will be transferred over to the CIP Sales Tax Fund. So I need the expenditure authority to be able to do that of $2,075,000. The ZEC Fund didn't exist either, and it's still uncertain, uncertain as to how much money we're actually going to be paying this year. I think there's been one submission. I think it's in process. And so when I looked at this, I thought, what I'll do is publish what I think it's actually going to receive in revenue, because you can't pay them more than that. And I think that the fund is going to receive about $235,000 in 2015, and so that's what I'm asking you to publish for expenditure authority. And at this point, I don't know exactly how much is actually going to get expended, but it won't be more than that. And then finally, the Refuse Restricted Fund needs an increase in expenditure authority of $4,250 to support some spending for an engineering design contract related to erosion control at the landfill that hadn't been anticipated, but that Public Works thinks is appropriate to do at this time. We will accommodate that through an increased transfer from the refuse fund in that amount. Those are the republishings that we're looking at this year.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions? No? Thank you. Okay. Anything else you have on that? No? Okay. Since we have no other discussion on that, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Let's begin the vote with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. We have closed the public hearing. Let's, under C, consider the amendment to the 2015 budget. Could I have a motion for that?
I move that we consider the amendments to the 2015 budget as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the 2015 budget. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. We'll move on to item six, the Capital Improvement Program for the 2016-2020 period. Scott, how do you want to start out with that?
Well, we reviewed this at the December 1st, 2015 study session. There have been no changes or amendments since that time, so it's being presented to you tonight for formal approval or adoption. That doesn't mean we can't amend it during the year, and I also want to preface again that these projects in there for 2016, any of them that are over $15,000 is going to have to come back to you anyway for consideration for award and/or any service over $15,000 for engineering is going to have to come back to you for consideration for approval. Paul, do you have anything you want to add since?
I don't. That is correct.
Okay. Do I have any? Actually, what I defer to, I, we do have a couple of citizens here that would like to address the commission regarding the CIP, so I'd like to have them come up at this time. I've been told I have Mr. Cameron here, who's representing on behalf of the Kessler's, a property that is of concern for stormwater issue.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council here in the city. I would like to express my thanks on behalf of the Kessler's for the hard work of the staff and for the approval of this project that will alleviate flooding concerns for the Kessler's. Thank you.
What project's that, please?
It's the one at 1600 Limit Street.
Thank you.
It's in the CIP at 16th and Holman. You'll have Design and Destruction in 16.
Okay, good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And then we have the Drews. Do you, you don't want to come? Okay, sorry, didn't mean to embarrass you there. Okay. Any question or any comments from the commission at this time?
Personally, I'm just glad that we can get something worked out to, you know, help the citizens with the problems they have. I'm glad we're able to come to at least a consensus to get ball rolling and, you know, to see what we can do about that.
Okay. Definitely.
Well, I've discussed some general comments. And some of this has been asked to me to bring up because, was asked about it because of the sales tax that we passed. There was some concern in there that we are not, this year at least, and haven't budgeted in there, Fire Station Number Three, and it was a decision of the commission to not look at that. Got to remember that this goes to the 2020 plan, and we are really just considering the budget for 2016 at this time. But our emphasis and goals of the commission were to look at a possible funding of an industrial park that we may be looking at for economic development. Our goal was to emphasize improvements to our roads and infrastructure system. We wanted to focus on that. And then another two that came up out of our citizens' request was, of course, some significant stormwater projects that would help alleviate flooding in our residential areas. So for this year, we decided to focus on those efforts on that. And Mark, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I'm fine with it, and I think we need to continue to move on.
Okay. Then are we ready for a motion on this item?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the 2016 to '20 Capital Improvement Program.
Second. Kind of know where the vote's going to go on that. I have a motion and a second to approve the Capital Improvement Program for 2016 to 2020. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero on that. Okay. Housekeeping issue, we're going to do the item seven, the cancellation of outstanding checks prior to 2014.
Yeah, Paul Kramer will be handling this one.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, Kansas State statute allows the city commission to cancel checks that have not been cashed for a period of two years. This doesn't mean that should the party come to the city, we won't honor the obligation, but as a housekeeping measure, we would recommend that you allow us to cancel the outstanding checks that have not seen activity in two years. Says a total of 33 checks. We've since had six since the policy has been, policy report's been prepared that have come in, so I think it's 27 checks to be clear, but ask for your authority tonight to cancel those checks that have been outstanding for that amount of time.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? No? Could I have a motion then?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the cancellation of outstanding checks prior to 2014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks prior to 2014. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 And that passes five to zero. Okay. Item eight is mayor's appointments, and I'll go ahead and submit this for approval. The following appointments for Convention and Tourism Committee. I'd like to appoint Edna Wagner to a term ending 1/31/2018. Appoint Stacy McCowen to a term ending 1/31/2018. To reappoint Andrea Cruz to a term ending 1/31/2019. To reappoint Anna Johnson to a term ending 1/31/2019. To reappoint Dick Wright to a term ending 1/31/2019. And appoint Carlysad Cashman to an unexpired term ending 1/31/2019. Have a second on that?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointments. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, oops, sorry, Mark, I didn't wait for you. Passes five to zero. I just took it, I said ESP, I read his mind. Item nine, we'll move on to the cereal malt beverage licenses.
Karen Logan's going to handle this one as well as number 10.
I had no doubt. Yes. These are the cereal malt beverage licenses that we're recommending for approval for the year 2016. I will just read the establishment name. Abe's Place, AZNZ Enterprises, doing business as Woody's Food Mart, AZAD Incorporated, doing business as 7-Eleven, Three Casey's Retail Stores, Country Mart, Dylan's, Eddie's Grocery, Fast Stop, 4B, doing business as Price Chopper, G O J R A L L C, doing business as K7 Stop, Great Life Fitness and the Yokes, Hometown Store, Little Bar, Murphy's USA, TA Operating LLC, doing business as Minute Mart, The Tam Pub Restaurant, Walgreens, and Walmart Store. Staff does recommend approval of all those licenses.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion on that?
I move that we approve the cereal malt beverage license as listed for 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the cereal malt beverage license for 2016 as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Want to do massage and the tattoo establishments?
Yes, and again, staff is recommending approval of the 2016 massage and tattoo establishments. I will read the business names. Bella Vita Salon and Day Spa, Elemental Wellness Spa, Gail Reardon Therapeutic Massage, Healing Touch, House of Hair, Leavenworth Yoga Co-op, Serenity Hair Design and Spa, Terry's Hair Loft, Testament Tattoo and Vision Salon and Spa, and we do recommend approval.
Are we, could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the massage and tattoo establishment business license for 2016. Beginning voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Okay. Under resolutions, we have Resolution B 2124, the planners' two tenant write-off accounts.
Paul Kramer, in his capacity as Executive Director of the Planning Community Development, will be handling this one.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, this is another housekeeping item we do at the end of every year, removing tenant accounts that we have deemed uncollectible. Doesn't mean we won't continue to try to collect them, whether they're not still due to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, but at this time, we would ask that you give us the authority to write these accounts off as unpayable.
Any discussions or comments from the commission on these?
Paul.
I have one question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
How did one get as high as $5,100?
That's the Bernie, okay, that's a Bernie question.
Yeah, that's a good question. This was the case of somebody who had years of unreported income. When we check income, we only have certain ways to do it through the federal government, but certain forms of income aren't captured by that system. So this gentleman had years of income that we didn't know he was getting, so we go back and readjust his rent from the time that he started receiving the income. So this is rent that he should have been paying over the years when his income was more than he was stating that it was.
Is he still a tenant?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Those were my questions.
Yeah, I think you were going to get more than one on those, yeah. That is an unusually high amount. And that's, all this time, I've never had circumstances like that. Okay, are we ready then for a motion if there's no further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2124.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution B 2124, the planners' two tenant write-off accounts. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Okay. Resolution B 2125, you want to continue with that?
Yes, I do.
Planners Two, okay.
Another year-end housekeeping item, any assets disposed of by planners' two must be reported. We ask you to give us the authority to report the assets we've disposed of. The reason that there's an unusually large number this year is we did have, we do have a new maintenance supervisor for the building, and we went through a lot of closets that hadn't been opened in a while, the maintenance room, we got that all cleaned up. We did get new furniture in the office and some new furniture out in the lobby, so we just did a really thorough cleaning of old items. It's a large building with a lot of storage, so we just did a lot of clean out this year.
Okay. How do they dispose of this stuff?
Most everything is thrown away.
Really?
If it's not thrown away, not If it's not thrown away, not deemed usable in any way, then we put it in the paper. Is how we, is how we sell it.
Any, anything else on that? Or are we ready for a motion then?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution B 2125.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution B 2125, planners' two disposal of assets for 2015. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 Mark?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five to zero.
Aye, thank you.
Resolution B 2126, to reject the quitclaim deeds.
Karen Logan, our city clerk, will handle this one.
Thank you. Yes, the resolution before you is, if you recall, Ms. Reddy Lewis did deed over some property to the city and various other individuals. The city attorney, Tom Dawson, has determined the way to reject those deeds is by resolution. Then what we will do is actually file that resolution with the register of deeds, and then Mr. Dawson is going to pursue other avenues to try to prevent this from happening again. However, we never know if we're going to be successful. So we're hoping this will work. This is going to revert the deed back. I know you, I did provide the letter we sent to Ms. Lewis along with the tax statements, telling her to pay those tax statements, basically, that the city is not going to pay those. So it is our intent that it reverts back to her, and she would be responsible for that. And it should be really made clear that she did this without our knowledge or consent, and we were no party to this. It was, came as a complete surprise. And the two properties is 410 Ottawa Street and 320 Kickapoo. Thank you. That we're wanting to revert back to Ms. Lewis. Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission on this?
One question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
More for city attorney, Tom Dawson. One of the people that the property was quitclaimed, deemed, deeded to was Representative Willie Dove. Can we take action on part for Willie Dove? Or just just remove us from the quitclaim deed?
This removes the city and all employees designated. I don't really have a.
But.
Willie Dove's another issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That would really be up to him and his legal counsel to deal with that. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? If not, are we ready for a motion?
I move we accept Resolution B 2126.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution B 2126, to reject the quitclaim deed from Reddy Lewis. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero on that. We're going to move on to bids, contracts, and agreements. Item 14, the 2015 ETAC CopLink recog, or reconnection cooperative agreement. That was a tough one. Sorry.
Police Chief Pat Kittens will be briefing us on this one.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the police department is requesting authority from the city commission to authorize staff to sign a statement of work with IBM and further authorize an allocation of $37,650 to reconnect one of our databases to the CopLink system. In order to sort of understand how we got here tonight, sort of have to go back in history a little bit and frame the conversation appropriately. Way back in 2006, 14 metropolitan police departments, including the Leavenworth Police Department, formed an entity called ETAC, which stands for Emerging Threat Analysis Center. By its nature, it allows those participating law enforcement agencies to share internal databases with one another. That's vital to the public safety interest of both the city of Leavenworth and the greater metropolitan area in terms of providing crime reduction. In November 2006, former police chief Lee Doring was before their governing body and got authorization to enter into a cooperative agreement to set the foundation to establish ETAC. The system ETAC was built with a series of federal and state allocations to the tune of about $650,000. That is essentially computer hardware data lines that allow us to share information. Each agency, including the Leavenworth Police Department, contributes annually to sustain it moving forward, and our allocation on an annual basis is $6,500. The ETAC system or group is run by a voting board, which consists of either the chief of police or sheriff. I am a member of that board and a voting member. We meet periodically to run the system, answer decisions, make decisions, et cetera. The ETAC board contracts with a company known as CopLink, which is the vendor that built the whole thing and runs it. So that's how we sort of got to there. Fast forward to 2012, if you might recall, the police department made a decision to upgrade both our CAD, RMS, and then add MDTs to the fleet. We've talked about that a number of times. That required a quite complicated process. The police department is tied into a number of databases, including CopLink, driving records, car tags, criminal history records, all of that stuff. As part of that project, we fully were aware that it was going to be necessary to disconnect from all of those databases, get the new vendor, and then begin the process of reconnection. As part of that project, we allocated $47,000, which everybody agreed was the right number to do that. In the midst of our disconnection from the CopLink program, IBM bought, IBM, big business, bought CopLink, the small business. When we then turned to our reconnection with CopLink, IBM informed the police department that in addition to what we had allocated, they wanted another $80,000 for those reconnection fees. I was not very thrilled with that. Over the course of about the last 12 to 15 months, we have been in some very difficult tense negotiations with IBM. The bottom line is that on September the 18th, IBM informed us that the amount of money we would need to submit was $37,650. On October the 29th, I went before the ETAC board and laid out the case and the facts to them, and they voted unanimously to assist the police department and fund that $37,650. The Kansas City, Missouri Police Department is the ETAC finance agency. We had to have someone run the finances for the board. Contained within the policy report tonight is a receipt from the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department. They have already allocated that $37,650. So having said all of that, I am again asking for the authority for the city commission to sign a statement of work with IBM Corporation to begin reconnection to CopLink and authorize the staff to allocate $37,650 for those services. And I will do the very best that I can to answer whatever questions that you might have, other than confessing my sins. I was not nice to IBM, and so if they complain, I'm guilty.
When reading through the agreement, my question is, under the estimated schedule, it goes from October 2015 to an ending date of February 29, 2016. So where does that leave us going forward? Because 26, February 2016 is closely upon us.
The most important part was first and foremost arranging the funding, so I have spent all of my time on that. That was the biggest part of it. We will then turn our attention to the schedule. This is not a simple endeavor. It's not a matter of simply unplugging and plugging back in. It is a very complicated project. We have been communicating with them along the way, the stages, the final one being tonight, and then hopefully the commission authorizes this action. We will then turn our attention to the schedule. I will make every effort I can to make it as soon as possible and practical. Both myself, the members of the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, and ETAC board are paying quite close attention to this, and I am confident that they will get the message that we need to get reconnected. But that's about the best I can do. IBM is not very cooperative.
Yeah, my concern is with the jump in, you know, where that's going to take us in the future.
Right.
The future costs. Okay, well, we will see, sir.
Say that part again?
I said, we're just going to have to wait and see what develops then on this.
Okay. This was the last piece of the project. The rest of it, I think we can work out.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay. Are we then ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the 2015 ETAC CopLink reconnection cooperative agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the 2015 ETAC CopLink reconnection cooperative agreement. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Madam Mayor, can I interject, please? I think that the finance people are going to need you to say the $37,650.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, okay. All right, as long as that's in there. They're very, they're very particular about that.
Okay. Not to exceed. Not to exceed $37,650. Okay, we'll make that as part of the record then. For that approval, could, begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bids for the 2015 community development sidewalk replacement.
Yes, Mike Cooper, our deputy director of Public Works, will be briefing us on this one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The community development sidewalk, or community development program, had a need to expend some funds to meet some HUD requirements. It was determined that a sidewalk project was the best way to handle that. So a project was designed that would meet the goals of the sidewalk committee, as well as the approval of the Community Development Advisory Board, and again, meet the HUD requirements. That project included 4th Street from Osage to Dakota, Dakota Street from 4th Street to 2nd Street, Osage Street from 4th Street to Dakota, with an alternate added in there of 2nd Street from Osage to Dakota. The project was designed, it was put out for bid, and bids were opened on December the 2nd. Kansas Heavy Construction was the low bidder in the amount of $277,805, and that bid did include the alternate in that. Public Works, as well as Community Development, are asking the commission to approve. Kansas Heavy Construction is a low bidder in the amount of $277,805. The project will be administered by Community Development Department. They will be handling the paperwork and the administrative portion of that. Engineering will be handling the inspection and project management.
Any questions or comments for staff?
Mike, Kansas Heavy, ever done any work for us before?
Kansas Heavy has done two other projects with the city. Both of those have been sidewalk projects, and they've done a very good job on projects.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, are we ready for a motion then?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the Kansas Heavy construction as a low bid submitted in the amount of $277,805 for the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk Replacement Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the low bid from Heavy, Kansas Heavy, in the amount not to exceed $277,805 for the 2015 Community Development Sidewalk Replacement. Begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 And that passes five to zero. We're moving to first consideration of ordinances, and we have item 16, first consideration for the charter ordinance for the general improvement projects.
Karen Logan, our city clerk, will be briefing us on this one.
Yes, as discussed in the last study session, the city commission did make a recommendation to increase the amount of the charter ordinance number 37, which was for general improvement projects. In the past, charter ordinance number 37 was at 16.86%, and that's the amount that we used for our general improvements, which usually a big component of it is the asphalt and paving, and then we used some other projects that were included in that. But in order to meet the needs of the capital improvement programs for next year and the next five years, you did discuss that you wanted to increase that amount to 28%, which, if I recall, that'll bring in about $1.7 million. And your plan is to use that for asphalt overlay next year and those type of improvements. And if you recall, this is a calculation that's done on your previous year's mill rate, and then it's calculated from that to get the figure that we're using. So our taxes levied went down from approximately, they used to be around $10 million, and they went down to approximately $5 to $6 million, if I recall. And that lowered the amount of the general improvement bonds that we could do. So by increasing this, that'll give you the rate that you're wanting to do over the next five years, which would be about $1.7 million. And this charter ordinance, if you can do decide you want to proceed with this, requires a two-thirds vote, a majority, so at least four commissioners have to approve this, for this to pass. And it does have a 61-day protest period, which would not take effect then until March 1st, once it is adopted and published. Do you have any questions concerning the charter ordinance? I have one question on page 26, where you're giving us the changes in the. Where it's, in the indented paragraph there, where you're addressing the tax year, you've crossed off two years to one year. And the example in there for the two-year one was '92 to '94, and that's two years. But looking at the changed example, the revenue for tax year 2015 for the bond issuance of 2017? Well, the reason we changed this wording was it was a little confusing, because if you recall, we issued temporary notes on the first year for the bonds, and then you actually bonded the following year. And so we wanted to clearly word it to where we're, like in 2016, we're picking up the figure from 2015 for the calculation. And we know that we're not bonding it then till another, till 2017. Like 2016, we'll issue temporary notes for the general improvement bonds, then they'll actually bond in 2017. So we were just clarifying that language. It's always been a little confusing, and I think it's a little clearer where we're just going to take the previous year's valuation and use that and the mill levy that was set, and we're using that figure. So it's very clear in the charter ordinance. Thank you. Well, and do you think it's clear after reading it, based on that? Yeah, it's less wordy, but I just, I just wanted to be sure, the rationalization with the years, too, that in. That's what we were thinking. Yeah, it was changing, okay. Because it's always been a discussion as to what the intent was of the previous charter ordinance. Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Then I need a consensus. Is it consensus or roll call? Well, this is a consensus, but it does require for, for to move forward. Okay, all right. Let me go ahead and just begin then with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like you've got five to zero unanimous on that for approval consensus to go forward. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve claims for November 21, 2015 through December 4, 2015, in the amount of $933,594.64, pay number 24, effective November 27, 2015, in the net amount of $310,177.48. net amount of $310,177.48, including the police and fire pension payroll of $10,905.68, and net amount $48,122.62 for longevity, effective December 4, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 And that passes five to zero. We have a need to go into executive session for litigation. Mark, do you want to continue with us for the executive session?
No, I've been briefed on the issue, and I will pass on that. I think it's information only, then pass to us.
All righty, thank you. You have a good evening, and thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? You're sure about that? Okay.
Yes.
All right, then, I need a motion to return to this room at exactly 8:02.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session for litigation to return at 8:02. Begin voting with Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in executive session. Five, oops, five to zero. Sorry, Mark, I thought you were leaving.
I'll still vote on it.
I know, I'm sorry. We are back in session after executive session, and we do need to take some action tonight on that. So for us, I need an approval for the consent agreement between the city of Leavenworth and the EPA, not to exceed $85,000. Of that, $38,500?
Eighty.
Eight hundred, $38,800?
Yes.
For a supplemental environmental project that's on drainage, and $46,200 for civil penalty to be paid. Could I have a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agreement between the city of Leavenworth and the EPA as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 That passes four to zero. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business from any of the commissioners at this time to discuss?
I have none.
No? Okay, Scott, anything?
No.
Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger. I mean, Commissioner Dedeky.
Aye.
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 That passes four to zero. I don't change gears anymore.
If you get that phone, then I'll hop for you.
We are adjourned. I'm just missing Mark. What can I say?